Okay. So, land acknowledgement. We acknowledge, appreciate that the land in which we gather is the traditional territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Called order. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Two items on the agenda. Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Report Anticipated. It's with the package. RFQ Upfit the Eight Dodge Durangos. B, Presentation of the City of Shellatown Draft, First Draft Official Plan Attached. Moved by Counselor Ramsey.
Yes.
Sent by Counselor Bernard. All those in favor? Counselor Dron, yea or nay? Could you just send him a text?
I don't have it on my phone.
Okay. Can you send text him, just tell him to turn it off, mute? Okay. Do you have a resolution first, or do we read that? Okay.
I have two. Do you want the financial one or please?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Counselor Bernard. Be it resolved that council approve the required budget transfers as outlined on the screen that's in front of you and also printed on this resolution here. And then I have a second one as well.
Questions called? Now, just one second. I had, I think Counselor Twill has. Counselor, let me see here. Are you 14? Okay. Go ahead.
In terms of the process, tell me what departments are involved with the process as to arrive at this recommendation to. I guess it was, not sure if it was Public Works or Protective Services Committee or Finance Committee. I'm trying to understand the sequence of events. So, when tenders come in, who oversees the tendering process? Who put together the tendering package? And how was the recommendation arrived? Arrived in that? I tried to watch the joint meeting today. Again, I'm still trying to understand the process. I thought it was going to go to the Finance Committee, but it was a joint meeting. I thought I heard Public Works was, Public Works was involved. So, again, it seems to be, I'm not trying to be critical, but it seems to be all over the map. So, I'm trying to understand how this unfolded the way that it did. So, what I'm looking for is a chronological, chronological as to who put together the bid package? Who's responsible for the opening of the bid package? And who collaborated with the different bids that were submitted? So, somebody can, somebody can give me a thumbnail sketch. I want to know from A right to Z.
A to Z, okay. So, could I just ask, in the meeting, was there anyone that, was it co-led or Counselor McCabe?
No, I chaired the meeting. I'm going to let, those are pretty specific questions on the process that I'm not able to answer, but I'll turn that right over to the table.
To Chief?
Chief or Dan. They're there together.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Go ahead there. Chief, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Through to Counselor Twill. Several departments certainly involved in the makeup of the, of the tender. Certainly Police Services, consultation with Public Works and Finance. With assistance of Finance, a tender document was produced. We had two submissions in relation to the tender. Both of the submissions were equal in parts, but it really came down to awarding the lowest, the lowest price tender, which was, which was Scotia Emergency. The tender was scored by three members of our team and, and really it came down to $32,000 in the difference of pricing between the two vendors.
So, Counselor Twill, just two questions. I just want to get a couple of other questions.
Yeah, I understand that.
Think it out, just think it out. I'm going to go, Counselor Mertart first.
Thank you, your worship. Just for those who didn't have the benefit of today's meetings and how, you know, quickly things are moving here, could we just get, I know, I'm trying to read through the report here, but I don't quite understand what is actually transpiring here. Are we looking to transfer budget from, from one department to another to cover the cost of these vehicles? Is that essentially what has happened? I'm sorry, I'm just catching up on, can we explain that, please, a little bit more? Because I don't know what I'm, what I'm going to vote on here.
Could I ask, is, is it, do we have a digital copy of it?
Yes, it's in public.
It's on, it was just put on?
Just put on.
Oh, okay. So, did you open?
I don't have it, but I.
Okay. No, no, I don't have it. That's why I'm asking. So, Counselor McCabe, do you want to answer that, or do you want to defer? Counselor McCabe, do you want to answer his question or defer it to? Yay? Defer. Okay.
Thank you, through your worship, to Counselor Mertart. Essentially, the fleet budget is managed within Public Works and the fleet capital budget. The, we're not asking for additional funds here. It's just a reallocation amongst the buckets, if you will, between Police, Public Works, Large Fleet, Small Fleet. The original capital budget that was approved wasn't really aligned with what we expected the spend would be. As an example, the original budget on Police Fleet was $300,000, and we knew that we were into a $600,000 purchase for the SUVs plus the fit-up costs. So, it wasn't, it wasn't aligned with what we expected to spend. And what we've done at this point is update the forecast, spend some time with Stephen McFagin, who manages the fleet, and just reviewed all the outstanding commitments and purchases and updated the forecast for the current fiscal year and are just aligning the buckets, if you will, within that fleet pool to reflect where we expect the spending to occur so that we're not making unauthorized expenditures.
Counselor Twill?
Yeah. Again, I'm trying to get caught up, like Counselor Mertart just pointed out. So, not sure I got my questions answered the first time around, so I'll give it another shot. So, who was involved with the rating? And forgive me if I don't see it. Is the scores illustrated here in this, in this information to council? Where's the score? I don't see it. And again, I apologize if it's here and I can't see it. But where's the rating?
Was that in the?
Is that here?
Chief? Do you have it in the package? What package did that come to? That come in?
And who, who was involved with the ratings?
That came through a special email. Because it was two committees that came together, the admin didn't have access to the calendar to put it out, similar to how we've been receiving our information on the OneDrive. So, we were able to see it. There were two rating, two scores. They both scored equally as far as what they were capable to do. What came down to, Counselor Twill, was there was a $38,000 difference between the, 32? $32,000 difference in the price. So, the recommendation for us tonight is based on $32,000 difference.
Yes, I understand that, but that's not what I'm asking. Like, normally, when a resolution comes to council with a recommendation and staff have some, look, have based their decision on a rating system, that information is provided to council.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying what it was. It was two points.
So, so, the rating system is not here. And I'd like to know who's involved with the ratings. Who?
Chief McConnell, you can answer that.
Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, your worship, through Counselor Twill. So, I can tell you, my deputy chief, Jennifer McCarron, civilian employee, Terry Polly, were two of it. And I am kind of just waiting, there was three people involved. I'm just, I'm not sure of the third. I just don't want to misspeak on that. But there was three separate individuals that scored the, scored the tender and come up with these results. And certainly, I can find, you know, provide the response for the third, but I'm not sure it's going to change the result any.
Counselor Twill, did you finish your question? I don't think you did, did you? Why don't you, can you just bundle them together? I know, I know. I, I, I see what you're saying.
Yep. Okay. So. So, deputy chief was involved, deputy chief McCarron, and you mentioned another individual? The second person was?
Terry Polly.
Terry Polly.
Yeah. He's a civilian. He's a tech services person within our Police Services.
Okay. And the third person?
Well, I don't, I believe it's Ross Buchanan, but I don't want to misspeak in that. It might have been someone from Public Works.
Steve McFagin.
Yeah. It could have been Steve McFagin. I just don't want to make it, miscommunicate that, and I can find that out. But three separate people scored the tender.
What about consideration for local business here in the city? I guess that's not part of the procurement policy, is it? Not, not at this time. I guess that's supposed to be in the part of the anticipated procurement bylaw, whenever that happens. But I just wonder about local business as opposed to off-island.
Sure.
To be honest with you.
Yeah. Through, through your worship, to Counselor Twill. And certainly, I think that is something we want to work towards, is building in some bonusing for local island businesses. We are limited in higher value contracts, anything over about $130,000 by the Canadian Free Trade Agreement. It specifically precludes any benefit or discrimination based on location for anything that meets the threshold, and this, this tender amount would be well in excess of that 130. So, it wouldn't be, unfortunately, one of the, one of the contracts that we could, even if we had the provision in our, in our procurement bylaw, we'd, we'd be able to extend to, to this particular purchase, so.
Dan, or CAO Eleanor, I, I know I just got the meeting request yesterday, but I had to attend a social this afternoon, and then I went to the wake for Grand Crockett, and I was trying to make it to this meeting. I, I just don't have the information, guys. The only information I have is right here. I, Counselor Twill, I, I just feel that, I just, it's come all at once, and, you know, we've had these eight Durangos on order now for how long? And then we get the Durangos into reliable motors, and they're out there saying, when are you picking them up? And, oh, by the way, we have to order the lights. But we ordered the lights for the Ford Explorers, and they don't fit on the Durango, so we had to make another order. Correct?
So, the, the equipment did have to be ordered. The specification of the vehicles wasn't really, you couldn't determine what equipment needed to be ordered for them until they arrived. That being said, the, the request here is, is, you know, for a budget reallocation for, you know, to, not for additional funds, but to reallocate the line items and then also to approve the publicly tendered award, so.
I understand reallocation. I know it's no additional cost or additional cost to our, additional expense to our capital. I understand that. It's just that I can't find the documentation. I have to refer to the documentation that was given to me.
Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, what it comes down to is there's eight police cars that we have sitting there. They're not in the inventory to be used. The police is trying to get them on the road as soon as possible. The tender was done appropriately. That's why Finance and Police met this afternoon. As far as the equipment and so on, they scored the same, 72 out of 75. So, the equipment is identical. It comes down to the price, $32,000 the difference. So, the idea is it's trying to get these cars on the road as soon as possible. So, the equipment is now in, the cars are in. So, all they're asking here is to move ahead. There's no new money. It's all in the fleet budget.
Oh, yeah.
Just to move it around within the fleet budget to make this happen, so.
Oh.
Let's move on.
Yeah. Counselor Bernard, I understand that. It's, my, my, my issue is that we've been discussing this for a long time.
But the equipment, we're not needing the equipment in now.
From Explorer to Durangos.
Yep.
Durangos back. Anyways, we've been discussing, but, you know, everything was.
Have to move on it.
Going piece by piece. So, we have a resolution on the floor.
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor McLeer, seconded by Counselor Bernard.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in, oh, do you want to ask a question? Go ahead.
Well, I, I think the, the, are we, are we talking the resolution to reallocate the money? Or are we talking the resolution to, to award the tender?
There's two.
So, there's two.
Two.
So, the, so probably the more advanced conversation is going to happen in the second resolution, I would think, because this is just the reallocating of previously approved money? Or, or is it?
Oh, I think Counselor Bernard is saying one, both are in the, both are one in the same, so that's my understanding.
No, there's two separate resolutions.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
But he's saying that.
And I think what happened to you, your worship, the reason that the rest of council didn't get all the information that Counselor Twill is looking for is because only moments before the meeting started, it was loaded onto our OneDrive. So, the only folks that had any information were the ones that were part of Finance and the folks that were part of Protective Services. So, that's why, that's why Counselor Twill was asking, because he wouldn't have received it until just, you know, unless he updated his OneDrive in the last 10 minutes, he wouldn't have saw it. So, yeah.
So, what's, okay, two resolu, what's the first resolution?
Right here in front of you. Can we put it back up there? Just one second. It's to transfer the funds. No additional, yeah, no additional.
What?
No additional expenditure to the capital budget. Right there. It's on the screen. Okay. Questions called. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Okay. All those against. Okay. Counselor Dron?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Okay. Can I get that? Just one second. Who's missing? Okay. So, it's, go ahead.
Your worship, given the IT confusion here and that Counselor Twill is not able to get onto his OneDrive, can we ask IT to come in and give this, give this counselor a hand so he can get his, his information?
No, it's all right.
Because that's why he can't vote, because he doesn't have it.
He voted.
Well, yeah, but he voted against it. I mean, I'm not passing judgment on why he voted against it, but he doesn't have the documentation.
At the vote, he already said no.
Mercy.
Okay. Just read that. Yeah.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Be it resolved that council approve, as per the conditions of the RFP for Dodge Durango outfit, the highest-ranked submission of Scotia Emergency in the amount of $208,000 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Do you want to make your appeal there for this resolution? Because you can ask it deferred. That's what, that's what you're asking for.
No. I, I was just, I was just trying to defend my fellow counselor and why he was, it sounded like he was. and why he was, it sounded like he was confused. It's only because he didn't have, it, it wasn't updated on his OneDrive. And, and it's a common occurrence that that can happen. So I just felt it was just unfair that he didn't have that. But no, I was at the meeting, so I'm clear on my information. But I was trying to help a, help a friend out.
The best way to handle it is just then ask for a deferral. Then we can come back to it either later in this meeting or tomorrow when we're back, because we need a quorum to make the meeting happen. Go ahead.
I think, I think that would be, I don't need a deferral personally. I, that would be up to councillor Twill.
Just, just a question for Mr Jenkins. Mr Jenkins, can you tell me, when it comes to tendering, is the finance department not involved when it comes to ratings?
Sometimes they are, through, through your worship to councillor Twill. Sometimes they are, but depending on the complexity of the file and, and the, you know, the, the specific nature of the, the purchase. So police vehicles, finance staff typically, you know, they know the difference between a dollar and, and $100. But wouldn't have a great deal of knowledge in terms of carbine locks and lights and those types of things. So wouldn't be unusual that they wouldn't be involved in the ratings. An example would be with the, the Transit Depot that we've just evaluated, the proposals for the construction. There were no finance people involved in that. It was engineering folks that had a much more detailed understanding of technical requirements and, and construction contracts and that kind of type of thing. So we have expertise in finance, but not in police cars or transit depots. So it, it would depend on who is available and, and what would be the most appropriate folks to, to make those determinations.
Okay, great. So, so as I understand it, there's no real template when it comes to, when it comes to tendering process. So I guess I was mistaken. I thought that finance, personnel in the finance department, obviously you're there when the tenders open up, my correct? I always assumed that, that finance would play a critical indispensable role when it comes to the ratings of any department in the city of Charlottetown. Very nature, it's, it's finance department. But there's no real consistency when it comes to the finance department participating in the rating system and being there, working collaboratively with the respective department. So that doesn't necessarily apply. Correct?
Thanks through, through your worship to councillor Twill. I, I think in virtually all tender situations, finance are involved in various stages. They may be more or less involved at, at any particular point in time. But, you know, right from the point where a document is drafted, finance staff review those for accuracy and dates being correct and those types of things. They would be involved in posting the RFP. They'd be involved in receiving them and entering the, the bidder sheet results. And they may be involved in the evaluation of those. But, but depending on what the, the, the highest level of expertise that you want to, to be doing the evaluation, there, there may not be a wise, it may not be best to put a finance person on a very technical engineering type situation, or in this case, an emergency services situation. So you want the people that have the best knowledge doing that evaluation. Obviously, we would also be involved when it comes to, through finance committee with recommendation. And, and we'd be attending at council as well when the, the tender awards are voted on.
Okay, question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Dran, yea or nay?
In favor?
Councillor Twill?
No.
Seven one. Okay, so we're going to the next item on the agenda. And that's not my phone. Okay, do you want to introduce it first? Okay, go right ahead. Do you want to, and then do you want to hand it over? They're online now. Okay.
All right, well, so tonight is just a really great opportunity for council to ask questions, get clarity, listen to some information from our consultants and the planning and heritage staff who put together this draft official plan for a review. Now, we thought it would be an appropriate time for council to have this opportunity to review it. It's not part of the regular process. The next logical part of the process is planning board and on to council for accepting a public hearing for the public. However, we just thought before we did that, that it would be a great opportunity for us folks to be able to get maybe a Reader's Digest version of this high level document that's 218 pages long. So the consultants are here, the planning and heritage staff are here. So I would encourage everyone to ask as many questions as possible. And there's no, there's no stupid questions. There, we're just here to learn. It's, like I say, it's a high level document that, you know, first time since 1999 that we've, we've been embarked, embarking on such a thing. So anyhow, I'll turn it over to Donna and Mike and the consultants and, or maybe back to his worship first.
Just before you turn it over.
Yes.
I want to thank you and the planning committee, the standing committee, standing committee for planning, development and heritage to get this to this point. I think this is a great step forward. And it checks out one of the initiative of eight initiatives for the half funding. So that's a plus. And I appreciate the councillors that came out tonight and staff to make this happen.
Just one more.
You can go right ahead.
And, and just one more point of clarity. And I'm sure everybody knows this already. But this is not the zoning and development bylaw. This says, this is the official plan only. Zoning and development bylaw is coming our way in 2025. So we're not getting into the nuts and bolts of changing bylaws. This is the high level overarching document that guides our city.
A vision.
The vision.
For 2025 and beyond. Councillor Twill?
Yes, I just want to go back to our chair of planning.
Yes.
I'm not so sure that this is the first time since 1999. Because we have, over a number of years, we have revised both the official plan and the zoning and development bylaw. So I, I believe we, you know, we've gone through this. Ideally, we're supposed to go through it every five years. So I, I think we have, even though maybe it wasn't every five. It could have been every six, every seven. But we did embark upon that, that exercise. And, and we've gone through public consultation. I can recall a number of meetings throughout the city of Charlottetown, whether it be the East Royalties, the heart of the city. I've attended a number of meetings. So it has been dormant. The official plan has been dormant since 1999. So I, I just wanted to bring that, that clarity.
Thank you.
Forward.
And thank you for that, councillor Twill. And I will add some clarity. This is the first time. This is a, there's not one single item in this official plan that will be the same as our 1999.
It's a comprehensive overhaul.
He is correct that there's been all kinds of modifications and changes. But this is, the reason it's, it's a little bit more complicated than all the others is because it is a brand new 218 page document. That's all.
Wrap it up, we're ready to go. It's good news.
One more, one other question?
You can go second time.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, second time.
Second time?
Yep. Second question. Anyway.
And just a point of clarity, there's no resolution on the floor. So I think you're allowed to ask as many questions as you want.
Well, 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 there's new revelation. A new revelation in municipal governance.
Let's start the presentation.
A new revelation. Okay, so, so my second.
Come on, let's go, come on.
Yeah, my question is, what, what you're proposing here in the official plan? Can we have a comparison? And can you do a contrast of the proposed changes that you're looking at? And we can review them and to see the, the status quo official plan? So we can do that comparative analysis and be able to, to look at, you know, what's, what's being proposed? What was there previously? So we can have a better understanding from a historical as well as a contemporary perspective.
I can, I can hand this over to Director Mike. But the short answer unfortunately for councillor Twill is, the answer is no. We can't have that comparison because.
Not tonight.
You're, it's two completely different documents. But I will have Mike or Donna.
Director of Integrated Growth, Mike, Mike Rus.
Thank you, your worship, and the Chair of Planning and Heritage as well. I would echo those statements. We're talking about two completely different documents in this case. But what I would suggest is that, you know, we start the presentation with the consultants who are online tonight to give council that overview. And we can have further discussion as, you know, council sees fit.
Okay, so Donna, do you want to let them go right to it? They're here to present the new vision, yes, for the official plan. Okay, I'll let you take over. And could you please introduce yourselves? Okay, here we go.
Just to confirm, sorry, Donna, are you speaking or am I taking over?
Hey, Nick, you're taking over. Thanks.
Thanks, Donna. Thank you, mayor and council as well, for taking the time to invite us to this special meeting. I appreciate that it's a busy time of year. Being able to carve out a couple hours of your evening is, is a big ask. And again, we're, we're grateful for the opportunity to be here to present this new vision, this new official plan to you today for your review and, and your questions. Blessing to carry on with the process towards an approval. This is just the beginning of really working through this whole timeline. And we'll be going over that as part of this presentation. But again, just wanted to, to thank you for having us this evening. For today's discussion, I will provide an overview of the official plan project itself. We've been ongoing for just over two years now, which is a fairly standard timeline for these types of projects. I'll give you an overview of the draft official plan itself and then let you know the next steps. At the conclusion of all that, we, we can have a very fulsome dialogue and discussion on, on what you heard. I'll be able to flip back and forth between the slides. I can share the document and we can discuss in detail what's in the plan following that. So in terms of the official plan project, as I mentioned, we've been working on this for just over two years. The initial public engagement occurred in September, October of 2022. Proceeding that was a lot of analysis of the existing official plan. So the one that was drafted in the late 1990s and then has been revised over the coming years since then. Obviously amendments and updates and reviews have been conducted over that period of time. But as indicated, this is a comprehensive rewrite of the document for the first time since that 1999 document. Over the course of the project, there was a, we'll call it a, a call and an echo kind of approach to how we developed the document. We did that preliminary engagement to learn a lot about what residents, stakeholders, council, planning and heritage committee and many others thought about the direction of development and growth and change in the city. We took all that information back. We started drafting up official plan content. We did another drafting of the plan engagement in March 2023, where we put together for the first time high level overviews of the document direction we were taking. We continued editing it over the winter of last year. And we had our final draft engagement in the spring of this past year, where we came back out, we said this is the fully revised final document. What do you think? So right now, we're working through this official plan adoption period. Ongoing revisions and edits and review happening in the background leading up to this point in time. But that generally is the overall flow of the project that we've taken since things were kicked off in 2022. In terms of how this plan was created, there, there's a lot of different inputs when we're creating these visions and comprehensive visions at that. Because this does really reflect the whole suite of city building and what it means to think about the long term growth and development trajectory of Charlottetown. We need to look at a lot of different things. So one of the first things we do look at with these projects is the current official plan. So this is not to say that when we started this project, we took the 99 plan, we put it in the shredder and forgot about it. The review of that document is very important. And we actually did have city staff at one point go through all of the policies and provide us their insights into which things were working, which of those policies have been pinch points or pain points in the application of the 1999 documents, plum overall like trajectory. And we use that to help inform, I'll call it the base really, of what we were working with, with the, the current draft official plan before you. A lot of core planning principles, as much as planning changes over the years also do remain revel, sorry, relevant in some senses. So it's not to say the entire document is gone, but it has been fundamentally repackaged and reframed to fit the 2024 context of Charlottetown. Aiding and abetting that reframing and the restructuring that happens is a lot of analysis and research. So looking at the growth trajectory of the city, the housing demands, both today and projected for the future, the economic context of the city, how open space, parks, recreation, traffic, transportation, all of those things come together and impact the city overall, we look at. So as part of this project, it wasn't just myself and the O2 planning and design team who were, were involved in this. We also had a full project team of sub consultants, including upland planning and design. So we had a number of engineers and land economics sub consultants working on this as well to ensure that we had the information we needed as we began drafting policies, to write a plan that was both rigorous and defensible for the current context of Charlottetown and the projected growth and change over the next 15 years.
I have a question?
Yeah.
Just want to go back to, you know, the people that you had that were sitting around the table. Can you elaborate again? I was, just, just want to understand who the steering committee consisted of when you were looking at the different facets of the official plan and all the different, you know, prerequisites? As you pointed out, you, you didn't throw it out entirely. But, you know, you, you kind of outlined some names and objectives, whether it be housing and other proposed land use developments. So I'm just trying to get an understanding from the outset as to who was involved in terms of your steering committee.
To the mayor, would you like me to answer that now?
Yeah, I'll answer that. Could you please?
Yeah, absolutely. So there was not one specific steering committee per se. But at the very beginning of these projects, we engage with the, the planning department themselves and try to identify who, a lot of key stakeholders, key interest groups, voices of interest and just generally people who are involved in delivering growth and change, for lack of a better term, in the city of Charlottetown. And make sure that we're reaching out to them and engaging with them in dialogue throughout. So if you just saw my screen pop up there, I'm going to try to pull the, the full stakeholder list up that I had available. But I can tell you offhand, this is, this is comprehensive. We reach out to a significant number of people. It's developers, it's community interest groups, it's people who are operating sports associations, it's transit agencies. We try to, try to, try to net as possible because it is critically important for these plans because they really do touch at a very high level. But they do touch at that high level, a broad, broad, broad swath of city building and city creating that we're doing as much as we can to reach out to all those groups. If you'd like, I can speak in, in generalities to those, to those groups. Suffice to say, though, with the three phases of engagement, there were three distinct touchpoints where we were presenting specific information, not just to stakeholder groups, but also broadly to the public. In and above beyond, sorry, in and above that, we were also engaged with more specific interest areas as we develop policies and components of the plan throughout that entire process. So the door was left open. When we were talking about Indigenous or First Nations policies, we would reach out to the nations. If we were talking about specific development regulations, we would ask developers who had expressed interest to us in having conversations about development, what they thought about certain regulations. We also worked internally with the city administration quite a bit as well. There's been a significant amount of internal review of all the work that we've been doing to ensure that the policies we're writing make sense for the Parks Department, make sense for those who are actually reviewing development applications. And that we are talking to them and making sure that they're sharing information about this plan as appropriate as well. Does that answer the question?
Well, I, I think it does. So let's, let's do a review of that, if you don't mind. So the key stakeholders, you mentioned developers, transit, city staff and the, in the relevant departments. Who else in the community did you consult with?
I, I'll, I'll run through a list here. And it won't be comprehensive because I, again, I don't have the full, full suite framed up exactly like you're asking. College, public schools, the Charlottetown Airport, the Queen Elizabeth Hospital, downtown Charlottetown, Capital Area Rec, Black Cultural Society, Discover Charlottetown, the East Link Center, Immigration and Refugee Services, Innovation. the East Link Center, Immigration and Refugee Services, Innovation PEI, Port Charlottetown, um, Women's Network PEI, Lanui, the John Howard Society, um, groups encompassing that breadth of interests, the Chamber of Commerce was involved, um, uh, like I said, a number of members of the development community, there, the, the net as I mentioned was about as wide as possible. We can't force people to talk to us, but we can do our best to send the invitations out as much as possible and ensure that anyone who is interested is, is able to be involved.
Just keep going there, bud. Thank Nicholas.
Thank you. Uh, the final piece, um, mentioning how this plan is created obviously is that public engagement component, so it is a timely question in that sense. There's really these three large pillars that, uh, underpin everything that we develop or that we do develop as we're going through this process. And that public engagement, as I mentioned, it's, it's every member of the public, it is also specific interest groups and stakeholders who, who will have more directed and specific areas of focus when we look through the plan. And that component of the document development is all about identifying those opportunities, understanding the challenges that people are facing, recognizing what the ideas are that are out there that we could incorporate into the plan and then going through that drafting process and having that iterative review, um, over the course of the two years that we've been working on the plan. So that being said, um, it is important to note, this is the final plan as we have developed it. This does not mean that it will not be changing, um, but this is the document that has undergone two, uh, full phases of public engagement, um, as a draft and then several rounds of administration, uh, provincial review as well. This has been looked at up and down the administrative chain, it's been looked at, at that provincial level, we have been engaging with the public on it at this point now twice. So there has been significant review, there has been significant revision as we've worked along and we are at a point in the project where we're saying, here it is. Uh, this is the draft official plan that we're recommending for approval. There is still the formal approvals process though, so in particular, after the public meeting happens, where members of the public will have their opportunity to come forward, provide their comments, there will be, uh, final changes that are made to this document. So that is really the last touch point where we say, okay, we're taking in this, uh, final form of engagement, revising the plan and then bringing it back ultimately to Council for approval. So in terms of the draft official plan itself, um, I'm going to be going through it chapter by chapter here, there's six chapters total. The meat and potatoes of it are the land use strategy and the subject area policies themselves, but there are other components to it that we'll be working through and discussing as well. So I will, uh, if it's okay, this is the, the bulk of the presentation, I'll try to get through all of this, um, just pin, uh, the actual policy subject areas, um, as we go through, they are numbered as we work through the presentation and I'm more than happy, um, at the end, we can go back, we can work through them in series if people have questions, but just to be able to provide that overview, the plan is best viewed in aggregate, um, it demonstrates how it does have that wide encompassing, uh, umbrella effect over everything, uh, that we're discussing to do with, uh, growth, development, change in the city. So I'll work through everything, um, you should be able to note the subject areas, um, as we go through them and then we can answer questions and engage in discussion following that.
Nicholas
Yeah.
Council Twill has one question before we go through the
Yeah.
aggregate presentation, I think that's how we want to see it go with the draft official plan. What's the question that you want to ask in this first part of this presentation?
Again, um, uh, I'm, I'm trying to understand the process and the, and the, the involvement of, of, of the members of the public and I'll be specific.
Yep.
Neighborhoods, communities, very important to me and how, uh, consultation unfolds, how much collaboration takes place before, uh, you know, we come to showcasing the proposed official plan to the public. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, I think you did say there has been some members of the public that have been involved thus far, but, um, main concern I have is a document is presented and the majority, I'll say the majority, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of, of neighborhoods and communities are not really are directly involved at this stage of the game. And if I'm wrong, I apologize, but that's, that's a concern I have is, you know, I look at the stakeholders, stakeholders with all due respect, you know, they're used to lobbying, I mean, that's, that's the business they're in. They lobby for their own respective, uh, uh, you know, their own respective organization, that they do it on a daily basis. Members of the public are not really lobbyists, they, they wake up, they go to work every day, they look after their families and they go home and they're not fully invested in, in the process like, uh, let's say the Chamber of Commerce or, uh, you know, the, uh, Airport Authority or, or the Port Authority or now these other, uh, other groups that you mentioned. That, that's a concern I have is that neighborhoods and communities sometimes have to compete with these, with these, these different, um, special interest groups. So that's what I'm really cognizant about, maybe you can help me with that.
Okay, Nicholas, Nicholas?
Yeah, through the Mayor, um, there, there's three kind of different angles that I'll answer that, uh, answer that question. Uh, the first will be by way of comparative analysis because the, the old idiom goes, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. Um, I, I don't think I mentioned actually at the very beginning of this presentation, my name is Nick Cool, I'm with O2 Planning and Design, so we are a consultancy that does this kind of work coast to coast. Um, I'm also working on an official community plan, so this is British Columbia of a city very similar size to Charlottetown, it's about 38, 39,000 people. And Mission BC in our latest phase of engagement did mailouts to every single property in the entire city, they sent out about 40,000 pieces of mail or something to that effect. Um, they ran bus ads, they put up digital signs, we were engaging functionally on, on a fairly equivalent phase of the planning process, we didn't quite have the full draft, but we had everything together and we ultimately had about 105 people come to our open houses, we were there for a full week. Um, we, we did the outreach, we were literally physically present in every single mailbox in the city and at the end of the day, to your point, people are busy, people have their lives to lead and this stuff is not that interesting to the average member of the public who is more concerned about getting their kids to soccer practice, you know, making it to dinner with their friends, with their family, all those other things. So just by way of comparison, um, I, I'll provide you some numbers here in Charlottetown. The work that I do, generally speaking, we had good solid public engagement, um, throughout this process. So the what we heard reports are online on the project website, I can give you some quick numbers though. The first phase of engagement, we had about 340 in-person, um, participants speak to us, we had an additional about 220, 230 people, uh, visit us and directly engage and provide comments online. The second phase, we had just over a thousand online participants, which is actually a really good turnout to, especially for a city the size of Charlottetown. We had about 180 to 200 people turn up in person for the series of, uh, presentations and open houses that we had there. And the third phase of engagement, uh, again, the second time with the draft plan, we had about a hundred show up, we received several online submissions from people, we had quite a few engagement sessions, uh, with both city staff and development community, uh, and interested individuals throughout that as well. And those are largely what I would say standard, leaning on slightly above standard numbers that I get for this kind of project work, whether I'm in B C, Halifax or anywhere in between. The third thing that I would add to that is this meeting is also a function of, uh, ensuring the public voice is heard. So I appreciate the questions, um, as elected representatives of the residents of Charlottetown, you are entrusted with, uh, representing the public voice. So again, that's why I am grateful we're here and I'm also grateful you're asking these questions because ultimately you, uh, are in many ways the voice of the people who, who are busy enjoying their lives as Charlitonians and, and would rather not talk about planning policy. So that's, that's really my broad response to, to the question. It's, it's fair. Um, we do our best, we, we try as much as we can, but ultimately, uh, sometimes the public has more important things to do and this is where it's important to ensure that we're providing opportunities both to Council, um, as we're doing right now and through the work that we do across those phases of engagement to reach out as much as we can.
Okay, we'll continue on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, we have six chapters to the official plan, um, the subject area policies themselves and the land use plan, the land use strategy, those are the two biggest pieces, but there's also a couple other ones, the first one is the introduction. And this is really about setting the stage. So the introduction is a lot of the, why we have an official plan, what it does, how we made it, how it aligns with other things that are happening in Charlottetown. So that includes just the context of the present day plan itself, so why are we updating the 1999 plan, um, what are the big important issues that we're thinking about in particular as we begin to develop and draft this? How did we do it? Um, how will this inform the zoning and development bylaw? So as, as was mentioned earlier by the Deputy Mayor, the zoning and development bylaw, but it does create a very 10,000 foot framework within which the zoning and development bylaw will do that nitty gritty specific work. And then also how does this, uh, document fit with the other plans and strategies? Uh, because critically, it isn't just the 1999 official plan that we're looking at as we draft this, we're also looking at the entire body of strategic plans, uh, actual master plans for infrastructure, other secondary plans, um, other development plans across the entire city of Charlottetown that have been prepared since 1999 to ensure that we're still embodying the broad general trajectory of the city. Once we work through that, we move into the second chapter, which are the vision and goals and this is where we set the vision for the vision. So it's the, the North Star, if you will, the official plan. Um, the vision itself is all about identifying that aspirational future, so rolling it up into a kind of warm fuzzy feeling statement, what is the intended outcome of this plan? Should it be successful? And then underneath that are the goals themselves, so we can kind of think of them as different lenses that will help guide the plan content. So not every policy that we write will apply to every single goal, um, but of the six goals, which I'll show you in just a second, um, how are we ensuring the work that we're doing is aligning with them generally? So that way the vision itself, um, through that will ultimately be implemented. So the vision we have in the document right now, and this has been prototyped and workshopped and edited and revised throughout the course of the whole project, um, to where we are now, is that Charlottetown is a community for all. So no matter where in the city residents live, everyone enjoys and benefits from diverse and attainable housing, economic opportunity, accessible, safe and sustainable transportation choices, beautiful public spaces, healthy natural conservation areas and a unique historic culture and charm. So it says a lot, um, in the sense that it has a lot of things in there and really what that's about is ensuring that as we trickle kind of the branches and the limbs of the tree here that we're weaving through this official plan, um, get more specific, we're still able to tie everything we do up to this statement. But notionally, ultimately, we want this to be a community that has everything for everyone to the extent that this statement enables. What does that mean in terms of the actual goals? There's six of them, like I said, it means that we want to grow efficiently, we want this plan to help us adapt to climate change, we want to advance social equity and inclusivity. Importantly, we need this all to be fiscally sustainable, we want to ensure environmental sustainability and we want to protect our natural and physical assets and resources. So again, these aren't things that we actually tie one-to-one to every single bit of the official plan as we work through, but as you see what we're talking about throughout the rest of the document, uh, you will see these elements echoed throughout the entirety of the plan. Um, collectively, these six goals, as I mentioned, will disseminate into all the policies and they also work up to ensure that we're all pointing towards that North Star vision. From here in the official plan, we get into the land use strategy. So as I mentioned, this is the first of those two, uh, weighty, uh, big components of the document and particularly if you're interested in the zoning, uh, and development bylaw side of things, this is where those guardrails or those frames start to take place for what will actually, sorry, actually be implemented in the zoning and development bylaw in the coming years. Um, the land use strategy itself is a really important chapter too, because it provides clarity and a common set of understandings for where the city's growth and change should happen. So it doesn't matter who you are, as someone looking at this document with an interest in Charlottetown, whether you are a resident, a developer, a landowner, the city administration or council yourselves, there, there is information here that is important to you. So we lay it out here, for residents, it's, it's knowledge about what can happen in your neighborhood. So you can look at this map, you can find your house and you can go, okay, I understand how in this location is are proposed to happen, but in these areas, there actually isn't that much change that's really being put forward and you at least can understand what that vision is for land use into the future. For landowners and developers, it's the same thing, it's a clear understanding about the opportunities available for that land. So I can do this, I can't do that, the vision of the city for the land I own is to see it become this. And then that in hand, or sorry, in turn rather, um, gets handed over to Council and city staff, um, as parameters around growth. So the policies themselves are very, uh, specific in those big picture outcomes that we want to see happen in each of the land use designations and create functionally a rulebook that city staff will follow as they again, help to develop the zoning and development bylaw, but also more generally review, um, development applications over time. So this is what it looks like. Um, the map on the left-hand side here, uh, if you have the, the official plan draft as an attachment to this package as well, you can look at it in a little more detail than I'm showing on the slide. This is how we broken down the city. So there's 10 designations, um, 10 land uses, if you will, that outline what can happen where throughout all of the city of Charlottetown. I have two bullets on here that have kind of buzzy plan words on them, I say that this reflects a complete communities approach to growth and that it focuses on a nodes and corridors growth model. What that really means, um, when we say that we want a Charlottetown for all, a community for all, the complete communities piece gets to that. So we're saying, we want everyone in Charlottetown, no matter where you live, to be close enough that you can access most of your daily needs by walking or biking. Um, you can drive to the entire city, but if you want to pick up a lemon from the corner store, if you want to go to soccer practice with your kid, ideally the parks, um, the corner stores, the trails, you know, all those different things are relatively close to you. It's about creating a city where you can live your life relatively close to, to home without the need to go halfway across town to, you know, get to that one specific thing you need. When we talk about the nodes and corridors growth model, this is about really focusing where and how we grow to the main corridors across the city, so usually the areas with the, the biggest, most extensive infrastructure, um, and then really dial in to the nodes, so where those two corridors cross. The idea underlying this really ties back to that fiscal sustainability piece. So this is about saying, where have we made investments in big pipes in the ground? Where have we made investments in larger roads? We should focus development in those locations instead of putting development in other places and forcing us to build bigger pipes, new pipes, um, bigger roads, newer roads, all over the place to service development. That's a bit more scattershot and a little less selectively, uh, allocated. I'm going to go through each of the 10 land use zones here, as I mentioned, uh, they are numbered, so just remembering, uh, if you have questions about specific ones, whether you get the name or you just get the number of the, uh, the designations themselves for questions later on, that would be the best way to pin it down.
Nicholas, is it okay for some questions just as, I know you want to do the aggregate, is it all right to just take a few questions as we go along, as we go through each area? Is that all right? What's your?
Yeah, that might be okay. Could you, would you mind if I go through just the land uses and then we can pause and have the land use discussion?
Okay, let's do that, thank you.
Perfect. So I might go, uh, I won't go too quickly because I still want to get the key points across, but I'll work my way through all 10 of these fairly efficiently and then we can really have a focused conversation on this one. Um, to be, to be clear, uh, the first one, the downtown is in the document itself further split down into three subsections. So when we talk about the downtown, we have a core area, a periphery, and then we have the waterfront itself. The main focuses of this designation are the things that you see listed out here. So there is a, a critical component of this, it's all about respecting the built heritage and reinforcing and extending the historic street and black pot block pattern, sorry, of the 500 lot area. So appreciating that redevelopment, uh, will occur over time, we want to make sure that this is, uh, as compact and efficient and complimentary and respectful to that built heritage, uh, as, as currently exists in that downtown core area as possible. Part of that means also supporting downtown's role as both a destination and a neighborhood. So what we don't want to lose sight of with this designation is that the downtown is still a neighborhood, it's a place where people live, um, and, and that is important, but it is also a destination and, and a global destination in many senses. So recognizing and understanding what makes it so desirable and, uh, such a powerful and compelling place for people to want to come and visit and be in is important as well and not sacrificing that along the way is important. The Eastern Gateway, just east of downtown is a second designation, this is following the direction of the Eastern Gateway Secondary Plan. So this is really about taking that document and saying, this is still the development trajectory and direction for this area. We are not intending to reopen it and fully reimagine it as part of this official plan project, that's not our job, more detailed planning has been done, here it is, and you'll notice in that agenda package that this plan has been appended as a part of the official plan itself. So it does, uh, serve a role within the document, but in terms of our land use designations, we're saying, refer to that, that is the, the intended growth and change for that location. From here, we get into the corridors, so as I mentioned, that node and corridor style of development, these are those long strips of more major roads. What they're intended to do is provide a mix of both residential and commercial uses along these key transportation corridors. So what we're doing is we're leveraging investment the city has made again in those roads, in transit services, the pipes and all the other engineering infrastructure that's already been implemented in these locations and saying, these are places that make more sense for more development over the next 15 years of the city. And what happens? And what happens if this is successfully employed is a number of things. A, you don't have to pay more money to maintain new pipes, you already have them in the ground. Same with the roads. B, your transit service itself becomes more viable. You have more people right on top of those lines. They are more likely to use the bus. They might not use it always, they might use it infrequently, but you're still putting more people right on top of that service. Looking more at the climate change and environmental aspects of things, focusing development in these areas means that we're paving over less of the city everywhere, all over the place. So there's just a natural stormwater management component to it, and also the preservation more broadly of tree canopy that happens with this form of development. It also allows us to create more specific and more targeted development regulations over time for these types of zones. So we can create one zone that we apply, or many zones, depending on how the zoning and development bylaw takes, that respond to the different conditions of the corridors explicitly and say, you know what, other parts of the city aren't really appropriate for more dense, taller, whatever forms of development. Part of this application of the designation is also about more generally finding ways to create more, we call them attractive pedestrian streetscapes is the term that you see here. This is about saying, okay, if we have these people on these roads, how do we make them comfortable places to walk around and just to be in general as well? So again, if you are, whether you're in the middle of a neighborhood or you are right on a corridor, if you're walking to get your lemon or your cup of milk or your sugar from the corner store, do you feel like you're going to get hit by a car? Or is it a place where you can walk there and feel like you're going to be safe even if you're pushing a stroller or with your kid? The next designation is the nodes. So this is, again, if you flip back really quickly, corridors are those major roads. Nodes are where they intersect. So you'll kind of see the gaps that you're noticing in the corridors are filled by these node designated areas. And these are really intended to be the sites for the highest density projects in the city. These are the areas that are most able to accommodate larger scale development. We also contemplate the highest heights for development in these locations. And again, this is about minimizing impact of development within neighborhoods and really concentrating intensities and scales of development in core areas that are best suited to support those forms of development. Within these areas, we're supporting a broad mix of land uses. So this is still residential, this is still commercial, it's also still automobile oriented commercial in some senses. This is the big grocery stores, this is the Atlantic Superstore, this is also apartment buildings, and everything in between. Again, we're tracking, we're tackling, rather, a couple different goals with this one. We're providing a more fiscally sustainable use of city resources. This is all about, again, utilizing the infrastructure that's already in place to the best of our ability. And it also allows us to do several things, especially where we're developing on already encumbered lots or already areas that are, you know, paved over with parking lots or underutilized spaces, that's giving us opportunities for redevelopment to say, you know what, we need to put in more street trees here, we can find better ways to manage stormwater on these sites. And again, ideally, at the end of the day, reduce or mitigate the overall impacts to city stormwater infrastructure, reduce urban heat island effects. So again, these are just more comfortable, livable places to be in. The neighborhoods themselves comprise the majority of the land base in the city. So this is, for lack of a better word, everywhere else where people live. And what we're saying here is embrace the low-density residential character of these areas. There are minor changes associated with the Housing Accelerator funding work that are being proposed for these areas, but by and large, if you're following the trajectory that you're seeing laid out here, we're really allocating change, growth, density to those core strips and where they intersect. And we're saying everywhere else in the city is more or less status quo. What we are saying is that gentle infill development, again, these alternative forms of lowerized housing to occur in these locations. So part of the Housing Accelerator funding is what you likely would have already heard about, it's that four units per lot entitlement. That will be further refined through the zoning and development bylaw in terms of how that actually hits the ground. There's a lot of very specific regulations, like how do you park the cars, how tall are the buildings, how close are they to other buildings? Those get sorted out at the zoning, development, and bylaw stage. We are implementing the half requirement through this designation. That doesn't make it carte blanche, like, ability to apply tomorrow and get things through, though. There is still that zoning, development bylaw that needs to be adopted to provide that frame of regulation. Another piece that we're proposing through this is this ability to allow small-scale commercial and institutional developments to serve those local neighborhood needs. So going back to that complete community aspect of things, we're not putting a superstore in the middle of someone's neighborhood. But what we are saying is inappropriate locations, and again, those will be determined through that zoning and development bylaw process. There might be the ability to say, if you wanted to here, you could open a little neighborhood cafe, or you could open a little corner store so people can get their milk here instead of having to get in their car and drive 15 minutes to the store. Ultimately, that housing choice component, too, is about providing for all stages of life. So the one thing we see, not just in Charlottetown, but really anywhere in Canada, that's developed through the 60s, 70s, 80s, is there's a lot of housing stock in our cities that are not super accessible for more senior citizens or those with mobility challenges. What this is intended to do as well is to allow redevelopment, again, in context and in scale within neighborhood that can support aging in place. So what does it look like to have a blow-blow and seniors home, but a more supported lifestyle housing project closer to where you live your entire life? We don't articulate the exact parameters for that, but we do open the door through this designation to say, it would be nice if we could have, you know, more universally accessible units, we could have cluster-style housing. Again, we're done sensitively and complimentary to the existing neighborhood. Someone who is in their 80s or 90s would be able to still stay in their neighborhood instead of having to go move away to somewhere that's more supportive for them. As we move through the last five here now, this will go a little bit quicker. This is getting more into the other parts of city building. So workscapes are a huge component of that. This is the actual jobs, the commercial, the light industrial operations. It's where we either already have established employment hubs or where we see opportunities to further concentrate those hubs. The big focus here, you'll notice that a lot of it stays to the north end of the city there. We're trying to maintain that proximity to the Trans-Canada Highway, particularly for logistics-heavy businesses. Ideally, that means we're pulling less trucks into areas closer to where people live, and we're saying, you know, we have this really nice transportation perimeter set up in the city. Let's allocate and really emphasize that these are the appropriate locations for development and growth to happen. It's also about ensuring that we're, again, concentrating investment in municipal utilities in a way that doesn't distribute them all over the place. Higher-phase electricity, larger turning radii for trucks, turn sweeps, those kinds of things. They come at a cost, they take up more space, they just generally are more expensive to implement. If we concentrate them in specific areas of the city and we say, these are the workscapes, we're just making more efficient, more effective use of them. So we're getting more bang for our buck by concentrating workscapes in employment lands. Lastly, obviously, what this also does, it does provide that separation or that buffer between more heavier residential areas and more heavier employment industrial areas. The institutions of the city are all of the institutions that you could, you would normally think of. This is the hospitals, it's the schools, the universities, it's the parks facilities, not the parks themselves, but like the arenas, those kinds of things. The big idea with the institutional designation is keep going. We're not here to tell any institution that they should go anywhere or do anything. In some ways, we're actually opening the door a little bit, where if you are a church organization and you would like to provide, you know, a housing project on your site, we're opening the door to say, you know what, if you are achieving certain broader city building objectives, we can work with you to find ways to maintain your existing use and also provide more public benefit. More generally, we're also trying to, as we say in the second bullet, minimize planning barriers and requirements for these types of uses. So if you do want to open a community hub, you do want to do something to that effect, we're trying to get out of your way with this designation and say, you know what, if you are supporting a civic-minded use, civic-minded good, let's just let it happen. Parks and public spaces, this is the actual green stuff. So whereas the last one, I misspoke, it wasn't park stuff, it was rec stuff I was talking about when I said arenas and those likes, this is the actual, the green space, the open spaces. We want to, we want to keep them. We're not, we're not saying too much about this. People love parks. If anything, the city could benefit from having even more parks. One of the things that we are trying to do, as I mentioned, complete communities lens, how do we get people to park better? So how do we provide more connectivity? There's a lot of really good trails going through and around the city. How do we make sure people can get to them? How do we make sure that they do their best to connect people to those pockets of parks that exist throughout Charlottetown? One of the key metrics that we generally use in planning from this parks and public space lens is five-minute walks. So ideally, everyone within the city in 15 years, if not today, do walk to a park or an open space within about five minutes from where they live. This is good from a public health standpoint, it's good from an economic standpoint, it improves land values, it improves quality of life. People love parks, and the market reflects that. Natural areas, it's, again, the green spaces, but serving more natural functions here. So we want public accessibility to those where appropriate. We're not saying stay away from them at all. A lot of these are some of the most beautiful, nice places to be in the city. But they also serve a lot of ecosystem, or what's called ecosystem services, or literally just infrastructural functions. This is not just watershed management, it's also where a lot of our stormwater ends up. So finding ways to support the biodiversity of them, to protect the functions that they're already serving for our city, and to ensure that we're not, A, developing in them to just create headaches for ourselves in the future when they flood or bad things happen, but B, are also leveraging them to, again, better connect people, better serve stormwater and other engineering functions that we already are relying on them for, is an important component of this designation. And then lastly are these urban expansion areas. So this is all about creating a framework for how these turn from unserviced fringe lands into, again, fiscally, socially, environmentally viable communities. And what we're requiring is where these lands exist and are unplanned, before we open them up for development, we're now saying there should be a secondary plan developed and in place to fully prove out that there will be long-term benefit to the city from opening these up. So ensuring that we're not assigning liabilities to the city long-term in terms of that infrastructural costs as we get to end of life on roads and pipes and those kinds of things. We're providing the types of housing, the styles of housing that people require based on the trending demographic changes in the city, and also ensuring things like those parks and that parks connectivity, the commercial uses, all of those pieces are being considered comprehensively when we open up development. So that is the land uses themselves. There are a couple other components to it that I will just split through quickly here, the transportation aspect and then the servicing infrastructure aspect. The land use doesn't exist in isolation. We do look at, consider, and incorporate transportation planning and this actual engineering into the work that we're doing. But by and large, that manifests as this land use map that we've just worked through here. So at this point, I will turn it over to the mayor to moderate, if you will, questions that are arising.
Counselor Twill, did you have a couple of questions? Just before we ask Counselor Twill. Nicholas, I'm looking at my presentation that was in our OneDrive.
Yep.
It's totally separate than what we have. It's, like, I'm, it's got subject areas, I'm on page 96.
Well, we will get to subject area policies there.
So land use is what page?
On the slide deck itself or the official plan?
In the plan that we have.
I will tell you the page number on the draft plan that you should have. Land use should be page 28 is where it starts.
Yes, no, I know that.
Okay.
So 28 is 2.1 vision? That's what I have. Am I going to page 28? Is that right?
It might be a PDF, just page mapping issue. If you scroll just a couple pages past the vision, you'll get to Chapter 3, the land use strategy, and then from there, it gets into the growth management strategy that inform the whole thing, and then the designations themselves.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a little different because I don't see the maps. That's what I don't see.
Okay, my apologies. I will...
That's all right. No, no, don't, just keep going the way you are. Counselor Twill? Turn on your mic.
When you look at the land use and the different criteria that you've outlined here, it's pretty substantial. But what I haven't noticed is the opportunities for revitalization, revitalization of neighborhoods and communities in terms of, you know, say, revitalizing brownfield development or, say, a commercial use turning into a recreational usage or, you know, opportunities of that nature, that magnitude. Revitalization is extremely important and brings a number of amenities to a neighborhood and community. As you pointed out, it's a five-minute walk, it's much more environmentally friendly, sustainable, livable. People want to feel safe in their communities, they want to know that those indispensable amenities are there in their community, they don't have to drive, you know, maybe 20 minutes or a half an hour across town to be able to have those amenities in their respective neighborhoods. So I was, I'm very interested in that. When you're building new subdivisions and whatnot, then you can effectively plan and carve out that vision. But there's also a vision when it comes to revitalization. And I've been involved with a lot of revitalization projects in my years in city council, and that's what's very important to me, is to continue on with that revitalization because that brings your neighborhood and communities up to the potential, the potential that, you know, that can make these neighborhoods and communities a much better place to live in. And what happens is it's a incentive for young families to move in. Any young family that's looking to move into a neighborhood and community, you know, they do an assessment and evaluation themselves, okay, what are the schools, what are the sports fields, what are the playgrounds? You know, is there an outdoor rink? All of those very important amenities are important to families that will look to move into a community. And if it's not there, then they're not moving in. I think you'll agree with me on that. So that's what's important to me, and I don't know if that's later on in your presentation, but the different categories and the criteria and the potential for revitalization of bringing these neighborhoods and communities, you know, and raising the benchmark and raising the standard to make it much more valuable and to be an enticement for young families to move in so that if you go anywhere across the city, each neighborhood and community has the same quality of life, the same amenities, it's safe, it's a great place to live. So I'm looking for equality and fairness.
You've, you got my pre-reads for the presentation. The subject areas will go a little deeper into that kind of stuff, and you're absolutely right. The land use itself is not, is not city building. There's two components to it. You can put the colors on the maps, but that doesn't manifest, right, as having all the amenities and the infrastructure and the things in place that people want in their neighborhoods. And that is where that Chapter 4 section, the subject areas, will provide a little more detail and color to ensuring those things are there. What the land use strategy does do, and I'll be really clear about this, is it enables. What we aren't doing with this is really locking down or restricting the ability of someone to come in and say, you know what, really big lot, and I think we can actually divide it into three homes, and young families who are looking to get a house closer to downtown or to get a house closer to the East End or wherever, will be able to have an opportunity to buy a home then if I subdivide that. Those kinds of things, we're allowing still. In fact, we're opening them up a little bit more even. We're not trying to say no to development that will help achieve these broader city building goals. Same kind of thing when I talk about if someone wants to, you know, start up a, I don't know what kind of club in their neighborhood park, we're trying to provide framing devices that say, the city is open to these ideas. We want people to use public and civic spaces and to create a vibrant city. We want people to enjoy and use the institutional spaces that exist within their neighborhoods. So I would say the land use strategy itself, it's enabling, it's not restrictive. And the subject area policies that we will get to, especially around the parks and rec side, and ensuring that people have access to a soccer field or a baseball diamond or a hockey rink, those aspects, again, we don't go to the level of detail of prescribing what parks or recs should be doing. They have their own plans and processes in place, but we do start to set the frameworks and the guardrails again at that 10,000-foot vision level where we say, these are important things that we need to be looking at, and they're exactly what you just articulated. We need to make sure that people are comfortable and want to live in all parts of Charlottetown.
Okay, let's go, keep going then.
Sorry, were there any other questions?
Nope. So your future land use?
Uh, yes, sorry, I'd skip back to the beginning of the map. I was just wondering if we had land use questions now.
I do have another question. And that is, yes, right there, number two, Eastern Gateway. That's a pretty hot topic here in the, with the city of Charlottetown with respect to, you know, moving from a temporary to, say, permanent land use development. And, you know, there's certainly a lot of, a lot of concern, a lot of interest. And when you look at the Eastern Gateway, what was originally proposed... And when you look at the Eastern Gateway, well, what was originally proposed, and I go back to, you know, some of the courses I've taken in public administration, the intended strategy doesn't necessarily coincide with the emerged strategy. And that's what I see here with the Eastern Gateway. What was originally proposed, what was originally proposed is now changing to a much different land use in terms of, you know, whether it be shelters or outreach centers, whatever the case may be. So I'm very interested. I know a lot of residents in this city are going to be, are very, very interested in what's, what's taking place in the future with the Eastern Gateway.
And as I mentioned, as proposed with the land use strategy itself right now, we are saying status quo in terms of that master plan. So ultimately, applications for development will come forward in that area. Council as administrators and arbiters of land use decisions will either agree or disagree with what's proposed relative to the, the plan itself. But because that work has been done, we, we are delegating to the plan itself that role in this area of the city. I unfortunately can't tell you much more beyond that. The way that we framed out the policy is saying the Eastern Gateway waterfront master plan exists and we're continuing that forward.
Okay, thank you. Let's go move on to the left half. No, that's good. No, just keep it going.
Okay.
Yep.
So just to close the leap on those transportation sides of things, improving transportation for all is a focus area as well of this document. There's a number of things achieved by that nodes and corridors approach. As I mentioned, we're making the most efficient use of the existing infrastructure by not putting larger scale developments in the middle of neighborhoods. We're not pulling even more cars into the middle of neighborhoods. So we're really trying to ensure that if you are getting around town, A, there are amenities closer to you so you don't have to drive across Charlottetown because lord knows traffic can be tough sometimes. But B, also that by concentrating traffic on corridors, the roads that are designed to the best of their abilities to handle traffic are the ones getting the traffic. And again, we're not putting more vehicles here, there and everywhere. What this also does, it has a second knock-on effect. By putting the people there, as I mentioned, we also provide a better context and condition for people to be able to take transit. It doesn't make or guarantee that it be more, or everyone, sorry, will be taking the bus, but for every person who now sees that as a bit more of an opportunity, it is one less car on the road. So the city is growing one way or another. This approach of concentrating the larger scales of development on those corridors is all about trying to mitigate the broader quantum of impact that that has on vehicular traffic. That also then has greenhouse gas emission reduction effects. It also, over time, will manifest as safer conditions for active transportation connectivity, safety, as again, we talk about ensuring that access to your corner store, to your things is done in a condition that is comfortable to walk on and to move through. So we have policies related to that. Similarly, on the servicing infrastructure standpoint, there's two key components here. It's about building resiliency into the servicing networks and providing the infrastructure safely, reliably, and making the best use of it. So where we're allocating growth and change is in places that we've worked through with engineering to ensure there is capacity or capital infrastructure projects planned to support them. We're create more work, more capital, more ongoing maintenance and asset management costs for the city through our land use strategy. And that closes up the land use strategy area, that chapter three. So the second one now, that is that other big meaty part of the plan, is the subject area policies. This is chapter four. And this is the one where we...
Before you go there, Nick?
Yep.
Just one second. You have a question? Counselor Bernard?
Yep. Just a quick question on the land use, Nick. I'm just wondering, going through here, will you be making recommendations on green space, green space areas? Possibly the size the green space should be?
Yeah, in terms of how much park space, like per people or things like that, or...
Yep. And not only park space, but the sports fields and so on?
Yeah, so we don't get into the level of detail of providing that, that granular of recommendations. What we do want to make sure through this policy plan is that people are being provided access to those things, that the city is providing the recreational facilities and amenities to meet the existing and growing and changing needs of the community. Parks planning is its own domain. I also do a little bit of that in my career. And what's interesting about it as well is it's usually less about the specific, like amount of a thing that you have and more about how it gets programmed. So land, land is expensive, parks are expensive. It's incredibly difficult to get more green space. Once you have done growth, development, you're usually left with what you have. So a lot of the recommendations and the plan policies that we'll get into in that subject area side of things speaks about the most efficient and effective use of the space that already exists and then really trying to target investments that the city does make to providing the biggest bang for your buck, for lack of a better word. And that is what we're considering. So the land use strategy itself does much of that. We do contain policies on more of the node side where we say as part of larger scale, higher density developments, we need to make sure we're considering how those people will have access to parks and green space. We are not explicitly requiring, you know, developers to buy new park space. We're not specifically saying how we would need to change programming for parks.
So what we're seeing is that there's a, you know, a lot of higher density development going on and our population, as you know, is increasing. And we definitely don't have enough green spaces or infrastructure, sport infrastructure now. So if we don't look at it in our land use moving ahead, we're even going to be further behind. So...
Yes, so what I can tell you in, in the official plan, we have policies that are about using things like the cash and lease provisions of the zoning and development by law more effectively. So when that gets redeveloped, how do we ensure that we are, one term that we use in parks planning is reducing fragmentation. So with that, with the parks provisioning, you will often be given park space that isn't really connected or useful to the broader park network. But often you can take cash and lease from the developer. They will be interested in those kinds of horse trading situations to potentially get even higher yield from their developments. And you can take that money to buy parkland in more strategic locations. We talk about that in the official plan, yeah. Parkland dedications, yep.
Are you guys going to make any recommendations on where that new land should be purchased as opposed to, because you guys are making recommendations on, on development, where developments should grow, right?
Yeah, so we do prioritize the parkland acquisition in areas where there's the greatest needs. So looking at the existing and proposed population densities, we're saying you should be trying your best to prioritize that acquisition. There's two components. Where it actually serves the broader benefit, broader public good from that connectivity piece, so ensuring that things are easy to get to, people can access them. But then where the biggest growth and change is happening. So when these nodes are developing, especially where they are in relative proximity to natural areas, how do we maximize the gain and access to land in those locations that further complements existing natural areas and parks that might exist in the location, but also serves the needs of the populations that might be getting added to these locations? And we are specific, not about thou shalt give us five acres per every 5,000 people, but we're very clear, these are the areas that will require the biggest focus and in term the greatest investment in that sense.
Okay, okay. I just, I'm just, I know there's a lot of focus lately on higher density, higher density, higher density, smaller lots, smaller lots, and we're just running, we, there's a subdivision now in Montgomery Heights and you'd hardly have a backyard, let alone, there's no real park with any amount of space nearby. I think we've gotten away from having a good-sized parkland. And I'm hoping that this new, this, this new plan will have some recommendations and some, some good-sized green spaces.
If I could jump in on that, as part of the work plan for this current fiscal year, council had allocated some funding for a parks master plan. So that's kind of that next level finer-grain plan that will provide some of that detail that you're looking for.
Okay.
This piece that Nicholas has been involved in is, you know, a higher-level document that wouldn't necessarily get into those, that finer-grain level of detail on site-specific decisions.
So it wouldn't make recommendations on where green spaces should go?
The parks master plan would be getting into those types of discussions.
Okay, okay. But would this one be making any recommendation on where green space should go or is it just...
This one would not.
Okay.
This is the big, big picture. CAO, did you, you're all right with that or what do you want to?
Thanks, Your Worship. No, the director has covered it. Thanks.
Counselor Twill, did you want to follow up quickly?
Yeah, just on the parks and recreation plan, we haven't seen that plan yet. So do you know where that plan is? Pardon?
I think that is not part of this vision, correct?
Okay.
That's, Michael?
I can answer the question.
What's that?
I can answer that question.
Okay, well, if you can answer, that'd be great. But it's not part of what we're talking about here. But you have an answer for that?
Thank you, Worship. So it's actually going out to, RFP is going to be going out soon to get a consultant to do that work for the parks and facilities master plan.
Do we have to go to a consult? Can we not do that in-house?
That has to go to a consultant and council approved it as part of budget for this year.
Don't want to approve it? Then we'll do it in, we'll do it internally. But anyways, can we just, that whole issue of the parks plan, I think that's not being covered in here. Okay? So we're just going to keep going on, Counselor Twill? Okay?
Yeah, the parks component is something we think of at that city building level. So as I mentioned, the policies, they exist, as the mayor mentioned, at that very high visionary level. So we are being explicit as part of the growth strategy for the city of Charlottetown. It's those areas like the ones I'm showing in the map right now, the nodes that are anticipated to accommodate the highest amounts of growth and change are likely the areas that most warrant the additional investment in parks infrastructure, in parks at all in cases where they don't have parks. What we aren't doing is saying we need this lot or we will need to provide exactly this much amount. That is a parks and a parks and rec master plan level of detail. One thing that is nice about the framework that we're providing through this official plan is to your, to your comment, counselor, on, on the sizes of lots and backyards and all that, you're absolutely right, backyards are shrinking, people are trying to fit houses into smaller and smaller spaces. And that means that those community park aspects are all the more important when we start talking about community planning. And the secondary plan or the expansion area designation is intended to help address that as well. So requiring secondary plans for these urban expansion areas, a large part of that is ensuring that administration and ultimately council have oversight over that bigger-picture vision for these areas so that those park spaces are provided and those communities are built if the people don't have backyards to play in that are big enough, that there are community parks in the middle of them that everyone is able to access and enjoy. That's being established, that process through this official plan. So it is, it's frustrating in some ways. We don't get to the level of nitty-gritty and official planning that most people want, but we are trying to set the rules and the bigger-picture frameworks in place that will allow council to have the oversight and administration, the authority to expect appropriate amounts of parkland dedication and appropriately cited parkland in the future.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, Nicholas.
Just can you continue on, Nicholas, please?
Yep. So moving into those subject area policies, as I mentioned, this is, this is the second chunk of the body of the policy. The first one is looking specifically at land use. This is looking at some of the softer aspects of how the growth and the change in the city hits the ground. It's broken into a series of different subject areas. So we have urban farm, arts and culture, heritage, recreation, housing, economic development, and sustainability and climate resilience, the last ones together. And these are all about, again, providing that high-level direction, so that initial framework to, to go deeper, to dive into these issues in a little more detail. So that is why things like a parks or a parks and rec plan are being proposed. It's why the city has heritage guidelines above and beyond what we talk about in the official plan, arts, culture plan, economics, all those different aspects get further refined through the various strategies, bylaws, plans and studies that the city or city adjacent agencies have. This is meant to really say this is that 10,000-foot vision for these things. Here are the things we would like to achieve. So urban farm is a really important one, and there's a reason we put it up front. This is something from the public we heard quite a lot about. Growth and change, especially the types being contemplated both in the downtown area, so the 500 lot area, and then in those nodes and corridors are fairly new and distinct to Charlottetown and to PEI more broadly. The taller buildings, obviously, in and of themselves, there's not a lot of those going around. We wanted to make sure that there was a process embedded in the official plan for providing oversight, providing a formal process to ensure that the ways these buildings end up looking, the ways they hit the ground, the ways that they get developed, provide the broadest positive urban design contribution to the city as possible. So what this recommends in the official plan right now is the creation of general urban design guidelines for the city and also establishing review function for new development in select areas. So places like the 500 lot area, we recommend it for all development in nodes. And what that is, is it's about creating basically a checklist, if you will, and some kind of oversight, whether it's an urban design committee or it's an urban design wing of development approvals in the city, or whether it's council, who serves that function of looking at urban design and saying this development doesn't do enough, our expectations are actually here, you need to do a bit more. And why we're doing that is about ensuring that things fit in, that things work. These will look different. This is change that is fairly unprecedented in some cases in Charlottetown. But we want to make sure that it's harmonious with new, sorry, existing surroundings, that it incorporates, I'll call it progressive accessibility thinking, so we're making it safe for people to walk and to use wheelchairs and all those other things around them, and that it just generally reflects the visual beauty of the city of Charlottetown. When we talk about arts and culture, this is really focused on really dialing in and committing to what we're already doing. There's a lot of great stuff happening in Charlottetown already when we talk about arts and culture. It's a city that's rich in those, those aspects. There are a lot of places, the community in B.C., I was telling you about earlier, who would cry out for the depths and the richness of an arts community and a cultural community and also just the general amenities and assets that you have here. And we're saying that's great, so keep that going. We're also saying we can do even more. And what that looks like is expanding the actual footprint of those things in two directions. One is temporally, so saying why not do more things year-round? So this gets into kind of that winter cities kind of things. What are our opportunities to provide more events in the shoulder seasons to spread out the economic activity and the benefits of arts and culture year-round? And then also the actual geographic footprint of these things as well. So how do we ensure that people who live in Marshfield or people who live in West Royalty don't necessarily have to drive downtown to attend some kind of an event? What are the things that are happening in those areas? What about the people who want to run festivals or little weekend fets or even just block parties in their neighborhoods? It's about finding ways to support those ideas. And again, we don't get to the level of detail of prescribing specific initiatives or specific outcomes too much in the official plan, but what we are saying is, as policy, the city of Charlottetown supports these ideas and we will find ways to commit to doing more of that or supporting more of that or providing opportunities for more of that. From a heritage standpoint, it's looking at expanding formal heritage identification efforts. So appreciating that the city obviously is a park place in both just its own standalone context and the national significance of the country, what are we doing to really protect and lock into that? And that's not to say that development shouldn't happen, but it is to say that how are we preserving the value that that provides intrinsically and more extrinsically to the, to the economic portfolio of the city? So part of that as well looks at continuing the support of heritage conservation and recognition of the assets in the city, but also finding ways to, in some senses, expand what that means, both in terms of what we're identifying and how we're identifying it. So if we have these lists of historic resources and cultural landscapes and important sites, not redefining, but taking a second look at what goes on to those lists and what we consider to be these important aspects of it, and then also leaning a little bit in that urban design side of things, understanding what it means to compromise those things, thinking of like cultural landscapes themselves, but what it means to complement them as well. So what are things that actually we are supportive of and what are changes that don't compromise heritage that we would actually be in favor of and allowing those things to happen? So that way ultimately Charlottetown does see the forms of development it wants to see and doesn't get stuck with things that ultimately get approved after a lot of acrimony and challenge and fighting. Looking at recreation, developing and enhancing the actual facilities themselves. So making sure that the programming is meeting the needs of residents both today and tomorrow is really important. As the city grows, it's entirely likely that the interests of people might change. In the parks and rec work we do, there's a couple different lenses here. One more generally is soccer is more popular than ever before. We're seeing baseball become less popular. What the official plan is not doing is making any kind of judgment or value calls about that. But what we are saying is that in things like that parks and the parks and rec master planning work that the city will be doing, we need to be thinking about that 15, of the demographics of the city, of what we need to be developing and investing in to ensure that we remain an attractive place for families to call home. Those pieces are what fit into that policy. Those pieces are what fit into that policy. Similar vein to the last comment about the all-seasons or the four-season city, ensuring that we're providing and promoting rec activities during all seasons. So, what are the ways that we can keep people busy, active, happy throughout the entire year? And then also improving and connecting trails, so that way people, A, feel safe using them, and B, want to and are able to use them. And the more that we're able to connect people through both trails and just nicer pathways to parks, the less you need to focus on acquiring parks. Sometimes the problem isn't that there aren't enough parks. It's just that people can't get to them or can't get to them easily. So, there will be likely in part of that parks planning process, some quick wins that get identified where it's, "We just need to secure an easement," or "We need to, you know, find a way to get people across the street more safely." And then all of a sudden, a whole bunch more residents will be able to access those amenities. Lastly, there are policies and recommendations around the new parkland development and the enhancement of existing parks to meet the needs of residents. So, this goes to both of those comments we received earlier. There's this aspect of that revitalization, so ensuring that all communities throughout the city do have access to these amenities, to these resources that make them all desirable places to be and raise a family. But also that as we build new communities and as we densify, we're providing and bringing online more parkland and better service and serve parkland for those new residents to be able to use. On the housing policy side of things, this is about facilitating what we call the full housing spectrum. Again, that exists in kind of two dimensions. There's the spectrum of affordability, so ensuring we're creating spaces in appropriate locations for nonprofit housing providers, all the way up to housing, and also just the types of housing itself. So, are we in a time of increasing house values and house prices still providing a starter apartment? What used to be a starter home is now a starter condo, right? Are we providing opportunities for someone who's a new grad from UPEI to say, "Hey, I can buy this after I graduate, and then I'm locked into the city and I'll buy the house, or I'll buy the townhome or the duplex, or whatever, in five, 10, 15 years?" Creating that entire spectrum of housing for every stage of life as well, that accessibility component for people who have different needs, or for people who are older and just can't live in split-level bungalows anymore, is very important. And more generally, just reflecting changing demographics in society. So, if you've been following stats, can data at all, households are just getting smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. People generally like having nice, big houses, but also if the average household size is only 1.5 or 1.6 people, they might not want a 4,000-square-foot single detached home anymore, but you might still want them in Charlottetown because they might work in tech, or they might be starting a business, or doing something like that. So, where do they live? And that is something we look at here, too, providing households for all different shapes and sizes for all different types of households. Especially appreciating, this is a plan into the future. So, we're not just addressing today's trends. We're looking all the way up to that kind of 2040 horizon. What will Charlottetown, what will Canada look like, and what will we need to be building today to ensure that we can attain, or sorry, attract and retain the people that we want to even 15 years from now? The six of these subject areas, economic development. So, working with all stakeholders in that world to ensure that we're well-aligned on our actual development initiatives and opportunities. So, making sure we understand who all the actors in this landscape are, and that we're generally speaking from the same playbook, and we're running from the same playbook as well. We don't want to be competing with any of our partners to achieve ultimately the same objective, a healthy, vibrant, thriving economy in Charlottetown and around the area. It's also about supporting what we already have, but then dialing into it as well. So, we know that tourism, the knowledge economy, healthcare, hotspots for the city, let's lean in. How do we support those? How do we ensure that we're planning for growth in those industries and providing them every opportunity to do more for the city as well? And then finding those edge and niche areas where we might need new manufacturing or new skilled labor, and providing opportunities to learn those things here. One of the big pieces on this front, just from a pure development standpoint, is the style of housing that we build. If you get taller than six stories in those nodes, you're looking at concrete manufacturing from a building code standpoint right now. They don't have mass timber yet. Where is the concrete manufacturing, the concrete development, knowledge and expertise on the island right now? Should that be in Charlottetown? Are we going off-island to get that help? I don't know. But understanding that there might be areas where we're going to be creating our own market for skilled labor, how do we ensure that we're producing that at home? More broadly, there's elements of fostering the business-friendly environment. So, just understanding, it's not reducing red tape, I hate that terminology, but notionally having a bit of a 360 evaluation on how the city is supporting approvals and the ease of doing business is always important. The city administration's doing a lot of good things in that regard already, I think, but there's always other aspects that you can look at. You can ask the development community, "Hey, how are we doing? What processes could be changed to make things better?" Those types of things. And then, sorry, my last bullet here is a little repetitive on the tourism side of things, but it's getting at, again, that year-round aspect. So, you'll see that comment throughout here, too. It's how do we pull the edges of that tourism season a little bit longer on either side, and just create a little more activity in those shoulder months? Last one here in the central part on the subject areas, sustainability and climate resilience. There's a lot of climate resilience talk and community planning going on in that side of things right now with the city, making sure that we're well-aligned with what they're proposing, we're saying the right things to amplify and support their work. That, again, is happening in more detail, and those plans is important. But also just more generally ensuring that the work that we're doing responds to a changing climate. And largely, you'll have seen how that plays out and manifests in the land use strategy itself. We are trying to densify, we're focusing on existing infrastructure, where we're talking about expanding that footprint of development out to the edges of the city, doing it intelligently and responsibly from that both fiscal, social, and environmental standpoint. What we also look at, though, are simple policies around access to things like natural areas and water bodies, preserving wildlife corridors and habitat through the city. So, as development happens, providing spaces and dedicating areas for the movement of wildlife throughout, ensuring that we're being climate resilient to things like Hurricane Fiona, and also responding to the impacts to things like tree canopy that that causes. So, providing dedicated, not providing dedicated resources, we don't say that through the official plan, but recommending that the city look at opportunities to expand tree canopy coverage, to look at ways to ensure that we're protecting what we have and delivering more over the long period to benefit both the urban heat island and more generally just shade trees and tree canopy cover. These are all aspects of sustainability and climate resilience that we can provide direction to and provide support to through the official plan, and those policies are written in this area. So, that is the end of that Chapter IV there, so the second side of that coin of the body of the plan. The next one is secondary plans, but I did want to provide an opportunity here for people to ask questions and discuss if council has any.
No, I think we're looking good. Number five, secondary plans.
Secondary plans, the fifth, second-last chapter. So, this is more or less exactly what it sounds like. There are two different components to it. The city has existing secondary plans, and we have created, sorry, created a designation that requires secondary plans to be created prior to comprehensive redevelopment occurring. So, this sets the framework. It sets the rulebook, basically, for how those secondary plans should be developed over time, what is required to be included in them, and the processes to get them adopted. So, again, providing that oversight and regulatory authority for both administration and ultimately council to say, "Either yes, we agree with this vision, go ahead, or no, we need you to do a little bit more to provide the parks, to provide the types of housing that we're looking for," those kinds of things. The sixth and final chapter, implementation. This is all about the get-it-done, or the how-to-do-it. So, there's a lot of different things happening in here, but broadly, we speak to both interdepartmental collaboration, so internal to the city. How are we making sure that we're not stepping on each other's feet when we talk about things like parks planning, or environmental planning, or pure land use? It's talking about how we actually make decisions based on both the official plan and ultimately the zoning and development bylaw, and by extension, the actual transition period to the adoption of the zoning and development bylaw. So, we are going to have a gap where this plan at some point is adopted by council and will go into effect, and it will be relatively inconsistent with the zoning and development bylaw just by virtue of the fact that those are two different documents providing two different scales of regulatory detail. So, this is a simple playbook for how that transition will be managed and how administration and council should look at applications that are bridging the gap between the two. This also talks about reconciliation, public engagement, regional collaboration. So, those are three very different things, but they all speak to the role that the city has to First Nations, MAT groups, to the public themselves, and to regional partners. And relationships are key, especially when we look at things more like the economic development side of things and the efficient use of more regional resources and infrastructure, so transit, or some servicing capacities being examples. And then lastly, there is ongoing progress monitoring. So, to the point made earlier on in the discussion today, the same way that the 1999 plan is not, has not been locked in stone for the last 25 years, this plan won't be either. It will be the 2024, the 2025 plan, but over the next 15 years, there is statutory requirements for ongoing review of it, and that will be undertaken, and we lay out a framework for how that should happen. So, that is the official plan. I won't call it in a nutshell, because it was a fairly exhaustive walkthrough thing. I would encourage you, with the document you have attached, take a closer look. If any of those specific areas really called out to you, look at the policies, let us know your thoughts. As I mentioned, this is a document that's gone under substantial and significant review. There's been a lot of editing, revising, tweaking, both internal to administration, through those two phases of public engagement, and also now through provincial review. The province ultimately will need to sign off the minister on the document. So, in terms of our approvals process, all that to say, if you have more thoughts that you think of, if you're lying awake at night thinking about the heritage policy section of the official plan, it's not too late to share your thoughts back to the project team. We need to go to Planning Board for their official sign-off to have a public meeting. We need to have that public meeting, and following that was when we'll be making that final tranche of revisions to the plan. We will be taking those comments from the public. We'll be taking what we hear from you, should you provide feedback to us, and we'll be using all that information to provide a more final, not a more final, the actual final, and a final, will ultimately be brought back to yourselves as council for approval, and then ultimately we'll go up to the province for ministerial sign-off. Just a final closing piece on this as well. As discussed, the zoning and development bylaw is the next step of this bigger-picture city-building project. So, once the official plan is approved, my piece ends, but the zoning and development bylaw team comes in, and they pick up this official plan, and they do more comprehensive engagement, more stakeholder review, more work to really get into the nitty-gritty of how development regulations should take hold and ultimately be implemented in the city. So, with that, I will turn it back over for questions or comments, and I want to thank you again. It's Thursday evening, getting close to Christmas, so thanks again for your time and attention.
Nicholas, thank you, and thank you for members of council and staff, thank you very much. Nicholas, the presentation you gave, I know we haven't, but it's, I like the outlay of it on how you presented tonight. Can you send a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, you... Yeah, it's a good layout, and it combines the words that are already below, we're proud of it. Council Matard?
Just a question around...
Go ahead.
Excuse me, the actual, when you're wrapping up here, I noticed that the, after Chapter VI, it talks about the Appendix A and Appendix B, but it does reference one of the secondary plans, and it's attached to the package. Is there any reason that the others, like the secondary plan and the Eastern Gateway secondary plan, are not appendices of this? Or is that, is that just like a clerical error? Or is that something that, is there a rationale behind why only the Eastern, or East Royalty Master Plan is referenced as an appendancy?
There was a specific reason for that. Off the top of my head, I believe the big difference is that we specifically called out the Eastern Gateway. So, I probably, earlier, I said the Eastern Gateway is appended. That's not true, Eastern Royalty is appended. Eastern Gateway, we had created the designation for. So, from a procedural standpoint, we're saying, "In the designation, refer to this plan." It does not need to exist in the document itself. But what we don't do is provide the level of detail through our land use strategy that the Eastern Royalty Plan does, and to that end, we've appended it, so that there's sort of this two sets of documents that you have to look at hand-in-hand there. We provide a more specific oversight for that area in our land use strategy. And I would defer to administration for why we landed on that specific approach to things, but I think by and large, it was simply tied to the size of the planning areas.
But, okay, so I'm just trying to ensure that because it's not there referenced, it doesn't make it any less of a connection between the two of them in that sense?
Could I, do you want to get the CAO, or Michael, or Donna, who wishes to answer? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, worship, through the Council Matard. No, this is the overarching kind of motherhood plan, and then your secondary plans are underneath. It's actually a little unique for a higher-level plan to point to a secondary, a secondary plan for land uses. Donna might be able to provide more information why that approach was taken in this case.
I just thought it was more unique to only single one.
Yeah, by doing that, it doesn't negate or ignore any other land use plan in this city.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I just, it seemed to want to confirm that it's not negating anything, or the importance level of those. Maybe they're just still under draft, I mean, I know they're not, but they weren't officially adopted, or something along those lines. And then that goes back to the other plans, as they come in in the future. So, we were talking about the Parks Plan, you know, that may, may get amended into this in the future, and any other secondary plans that have a direct correlation to the official plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Good. Is that right? Okay. Council Twill? Just wrap her up there, old buddy.
Thank you for your presentation. Where, I guess you could say we're scratching the outer surfaces as we're proceeding along here. You did say that one of the stakeholders that you consulted with was the provincial government. And just a question I have is, you know, when you go to finalize an official plan and zoning and development bylaw, if city council did not approve it, does the provincial government have jurisdiction to go ahead and approve the official plan and zoning development bylaw for the city of Charlottetown, even if we reject what's being proposed and after consulting with the residents? Is that, you know, we heard, we did hear the federal minister here about a month ago saying that he has the jurisdiction and legal authority to go ahead and overrule city council. Does that same logic...
Provincial minister, wasn't the federal, it was provincial. It was the provincial minister.
I'm sorry, provincial, yeah, it was the provincial minister. So, does that same logic and rationale hold true if we said no, and the province liked this zoning and development bylaw and official plan? Can they approve it, even if we disapprove it?
We defer. Michael?
The province has the ability to legislate special planning areas, which would supersede any municipal regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, because we're subservient to provincial statute. So, but Council Twill, you know what? We're getting into an issue that's being discussed. No, no, I just, yeah, I'm over... Deputy Mayor Yankop?
Thank you. And this might be more of a question for the staff than our consultant, but I'll just throw it out there to the ether and see who wants to answer it. So, currently, you know, because our official plan is older, and we're embarking on a new one, and also our zoning and development bylaw, we have a considerably large amount of files that come through to Planning Board with exemptions and changes to our zoning and development bylaw, exemptions and changes to our official plan. Is the idea of embarking on these exercises in hopes that, that we have these, we'll have these two new documents, and we will have seldom a time that we're going to have to take these things and ask for amendments and changes because they're new and updated? So, we're not going to be constantly saying, "Oh, can we give this person a variance for, to put their garage here," et cetera? Like, is the idea less of that because we've got more modern plans? So, it should streamline planning and heritage processes as more, as of right?
Well, we got three professional planners in the, in the room, no, four or five. Great, take a shot at us. And Nicholas, too. Well, Nicholas, you're not a planner, you're a...
I'm a planner. Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, good, good, we got six. Who's going to take a jab at us? Michael?
I would say generally that the best practice would be to regularly revisit these plans and policies and bylaws to ensure that they meet the expectation of the community and also offer, you know, economic opportunities for the development community as well. You know, we're always trying to balance our ability. In an instance like now where we have a housing crisis, we want to ensure that we're offering opportunities where housing can be built in a reasonable timeframe, while also ensuring that residents know what to expect to be developed next door.
Okay. Eleanor, you want to take a shot?
Thank you, Your Worship. So that said, to directly answer your question, no, it does not guarantee that there won't be amendments to this plan, because your plans can never anticipate every innovation or every new idea that a developer would come up with, and you want that flexibility to be nimble as your community grows. That's why you have the ability to put through amendments on the plan. But it will certainly help take us in the right direction.
Nicholas, want to add anything?
Yep, just to close, echoing particularly Eleanor, we can't stop developers from making applications, so if someone owns land anywhere, they can put in an application to amend it, even if they fully don't comply. It's ultimately council who sets the precedent, once this is adopted, on whether they will make those amendments or not. The more that get made, the more applications you'll have, just because it indicates to the market that there are opportunities to test the flexibility. As Eleanor mentioned as well, though, you want to be flexible. You never want to hard bind your official plan, because five years from now, something really interesting and exciting that we hadn't contemplated couldn't go down the pipeline, and we definitely want you to be able to do that as well. So, yeah, we can't, we can't stop applications from happening, but ideally what a new plan does do is it has a bit of a cooling effect. It creates very clear rules that are very freshly adopted by council for where development is anticipated and will be most likely to get approved. And generally speaking, markets do respond to that, but obviously, as soon as it's adopted, things can change.
The experts know. Could I ask Councilman Ramsey, do you have a question?
Oh, well, I got that dirty eyeball from the other three or four times, I didn't know if you wanted me to speak or not. No, it's just something simple, is there a timeframe for this to be adopted? And I think you sort of mentioned it could change between 10 to 15 years, you know, going down the road, consultants, got to go to a public meeting. Do we have to go by 2026, we'll use for that for an example, or 2025? Just a question.
Eleanor, or Michael? I'm not going to ask Nicholas, he's out in Mission B.C.
The schedule moving forward, the next steps would be to schedule the meeting with Planning Board to set up the public meeting that will be in the new year, and then it will come back through Planning Boards and council for adoption. It will be in 2025.
Thank you, that answered the question, thank you.
After council approves the document, it does go to the province for final sign-off as well.
Nicholas, thank you very much, and I want to wish you a Merry Christmas. Joyeux Noël, Feliz Navidad, and thank you for everything you've done. Did you have something to say?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Seconded, all in favor? Nicholas, thank you very much. I can get going. Thank you.
Thank you all. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
And please, please send that document.
Absolutely. We'll get that over right now. Bye for now, all.